Number sixteen to order invocation given by Mr. Kenner and the pledge allegiance by Hayden Mitchell.
Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise for your great goodness towards us. We ask you to bless the city's employees. We ask you to be with them as they go about their duties. We ask you to comfort them when they're hurt. And we ask and give praise to you for them when they go above and beyond the call of duty. We ask you to be with the mayor and council this evening as they go about the public business, lead, guide, and direct them. In all that they do, these things we ask in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge the allegiance of the United States.
I'll be the United States of America.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight is to present a lifesavings awards and Medal of Valor award. Chief Latimer and Chief Lee.
Thank you, council and mayor, for the opportunity to recognize four city employees, three with the Scottsboro Police Department and one with the Scottsboro Fire Department. If I could, I'd like to have them come up here as I name them. Officer Tyler McLemore. Officer Riley McBride. Sergeant Kevin Smith. Battalion Chief William West. On July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, officers Tyler McLemore, Riley McBride, and Sergeant Kevin Smith were dispatched to fourteen sixty-five County Road seventeen in response to a structure fire with a collar trapped inside. Officer McLemore arrived first, followed closely by Sergeant Smith. Sergeant Smith retrieved his halogen tool and quickly joined Officer McLemore, who had located Polly Hutchinson by the sound of her knocking on the wall. The house was fully engulfed in flames and filled with toxic smoke and heat. Officer McBride arrived on the scene as Sergeant Smith broke a window to create an exit, carefully removing the glass and shards from the window frame. Officer McLemore then pulled down a curtain to cover the frame. Although they could not initially see Mrs. Hutchinson, Officer McLemore bravely entered through the window to search for her despite the intense conditions. He had to return to the window several times for fresh air. At this point, Battalion Chief William West arrived on scene with a thermal camera, which he handed to Officer McLemore. Using the camera, Officer McLemore located Mrs. Hutchinson and dragged her to the window. Officer McBride and Sergeant Smith assisted in pulling Mrs. Hutchinson out, after which Sergeant Smith helped Officer McLemore exit the house. Chief West retrieved oxygen from his truck while Officer McBride, Officer McLemore, and Sergeant Smith administered first aid to Mrs. Hutchinson. On-duty fire personnel arrived shortly afterward and began combating the fire. Mrs. Hutchinson was given oxygen until Highland's EMS arrived and took over her care. The teamwork displayed by the on-scene officers and firefighters was crucial in saving Mrs. Hutchinson's life. Officers McLemore and McBride suffered from smoke inhalation and received oxygen on the scene as well. Officer McLemore's selfless actions entering the burning home without regard for his own safety directly resulted in the rescue of a Scottsboro citizen. All these officers deserve recognition for their exemplary conduct during this call as their actions and professionalism exceeded the high standards of the Scottsboro Police Department.
I just want to reiterate what Chief Latimer just spoke on. The selfless actions of these members of the Scottsboro Police Department, Officer Tyler McLemore, Officer Riley McBride, and Sergeant Kevin Smith, along with Battalion Chief William West with the Scottsboro Fire Department, without a doubt produced the best outcome imaginable under the circumstances early that morning. On behalf of the Scottsboro Fire Department, I want to say thank you to our brothers in blue for their quick action and disregard for their own safety to save the life of another.
This time I'd like to present some awards. The first is the Medal of Honor. To Officer. I'd like to present the lifesaving award to Sergeant Kevin Smith. And I'd like to present the lifesaving awards to Riley McBride.
I have a chief's award of excellence to present to Battalion Chief William West. Following the fire, Mrs. Polly Hutchinson spent several days at Vanderbilt in the burn unit with inhalation damage to the lungs. Today, I'm very thankful to say that she has made an almost complete recovery and has joined us here this evening. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please come forward?
Thank you, gentlemen. Well, it's hard to follow that right there. We are very blessed employees with the city. Next is to present the certificates of election.
As you know, the city just held a municipal election. So I'll present those certificate of elections. Mayor McCain? Man, I'm still bored. Mr. Patrick. Next is to present the Boy Service Awards. It's always an honor and pleasure to do these. Taylor Miller, would you come forward, please? In appreciation for your five years of dedicated service in the city. Natrius Green. Natrius, in appreciation for your ten years of professional service in the city. Daniel Locklear. In appreciation for your good ten years of dedicated service in the city. Ryan Pupp. No, anyway. Appreciation for your fifteen years. Albert Fattner. In appreciation for your twenty years of dedicated service. And Patrick Akis. For your twenty years of dedicated service. We've got some great city employees.
Well, that's always fun. Now let's get down to some business, I guess. Number four tonight, discuss the animal tethering. Ms. Winsap. Yeah, come on up. I'd like to you to go over that one more time and then Mr. Kenner's got some things.
Okay, on July fifteenth, I spoke about dogs being chained up. I appreciate the opportunity to say my speech and proposal for anyone who missed it. My whole life, I've seen dogs chained up, no attention, food, water. For around the last two years, I have watched two dogs chained up for twenty-four seven every day, and it's heartbreaking, suffering without water in this hundred-degree Alabama weather. All I ever hear is animal control say, there's nothing we can do. Why do we have and pay taxes for animal control if they can't and don't protect our animals? And why are some of these people in the line of work if they don't care and won't help the animals? Officials just pass people along saying it's not their job and can't help, but they're elected officials. So I'm here today to start at a lower level and try to get a law passed for Jackson County and the city, and then try to work the law to a state level. So now I'm contacting you to help pass a county and city law against chaining dogs up twenty-four seven. I would love to see someone talk about animal cruelty in past laws, especially one that makes it against the law in Jackson County in Alabama to tie a dog out twenty-four seven in extreme cold and hot weather, and they feed him water and shelter properly. Animal control says that if they have a doghouse that they're fine. Well, extreme heat and full sun, a doghouse gets hot and they can't use it. If it's cold and no insulation, it's no help to the dog. If you were chained up twenty-four seven and had nothing to do all day and have to rely on someone to give you food, water, shelter, and attention, and they walk past you every day and ignore you, wouldn't it break your spirits and make you not even want to exist anymore? Make people see that a dog's life is important. Make punishments that deter people from being cruel and that lets animal control sight and give consequences to people who treat a dog with cruelty. Make animal control be accountable for leaving animals to die because they can't or don't want to do their job. I know it can be done because there are twenty-three states and DC with laws that concern tethering or chaining of dogs. Athens and Huntsville City Council members have banned unsupervised dog tethering for prolonged periods of time. If they can do it, I know Scottsboro and Jackson County, Alabama can do it. I am proposing that Jackson County and the city of Scottsboro follow Athens and Huntsville and pass laws against chaining dogs and saving them from a lifetime of inhumane treatment. I am proposing a bill that the first-time offenders be charged with a two-hundred-dollar fine, second-time offenders are charged with a five-hundred-dollar fine, and third-time offenders will have to appear in court. These laws would also help animal control to be able to enforce the laws and be able to help these dogs. Also, it would deter animal abuse while bringing in revenue to help the animal shelter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Kenner, before he starts, I'll be clear, though. This will be the city of Scottsboro only, anything we do here.
Right, I understand.
Okay.
Yes. I reviewed Huntsville's ordinance and Athens ordinance, and I would propose to the council an ordinance based primarily on Athens with one section out of the Huntsville ordinance having to do with the tethering of dogs. Dogs shall not be tied, chained, or placed on a line in a manner that presents a hazard of any kind to themselves or to the general public. As far as punishment, we would, I would recommend a Class C misdemeanor, which means the judge could set the fines based on the circumstances, not necessarily the number of times. And the fine would be up to five hundred dollars and up to thirty days in jail, depending on the circumstances. The ordinance would have a structurally sound, moisture-proof, windproof shelter large enough for the animal to be reasonably clean and dry. It would be presumed as a matter of law that if it does not protect the dog from extreme temperatures or does not provide adequate ventilation, that that does not comply with the law. They would not be allowed to be kept in dangerous or unsanitary conditions, including but not limited to excessive waste, dirty water, dangerous objects which may injure them, or other circumstances which could cause harm to the dog's physical health. A closure would have to be provided, a minimum of two-hundred-twenty-five square feet if a dog weighed thirty pounds or more, or a hundred square feet if a dog weighed under thirty pounds. And it reinforces our current ordinance, which says that a dog is not allowed to run at large unless they're under the direct supervision of their owner. This protects the animals, it protects the owners from potential liability, protects the general public.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions on this? No questions on that. Mr. Kenner, we'll get this written up and we can vote on this next week.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Number five, the public hearing to discuss the community development block grant program. Mr. Akif, let me start off by saying this is the time and place for the public hearing for this. Mr. Akif's here to speak on this.
Thank you. The purpose of the public hearing is to notify the public that the city council is considering applying for a community development block grant program. You have an adopted citizen participation plan that requires you to have a public hearing anytime you do apply for CDBG funds. So I'm going to give you a brief summary of what the CDBG program is and ask anybody if they have any questions. But basically, what the CDBG program is, is community development block grant money that starts at HUD and it's distributed throughout the country. And then they take populations below thirty thousand people and they distribute it for the state. Then it goes to the Alabama Department of Economic Community Affairs, and they divvy it up into various pots. Those pots range from competitive grants, economic development grants, planning grants, urgent need grants, things like that. There's four caveats to get the money. One is it's got to be either low and moderate income, it has to have an economic development tie, an elimination of slum and blight, or a urgent need project that they deem as urgent need. You're currently doing a slum and blight project to demolish homes throughout the city, but it's same thing. The project you're considering is a drainage project along Scott Laurel Street to address a failing culvert. But what you have to do is have this hearing. They have roughly twenty-three million dollars. They break it down into funds and then we'd apply for consideration for that. And after you have your hearing, then it's your next council meeting and you could take action. But with that, I'll open it up to anybody have any question.
Okay. This is time for anybody with public questions about this program or this particular grant. No one here. I appreciate First Baptist being here tonight to support this. I know this will directly affect some of their area where this culvert has failed, so. No other questions, and then this will conclude the public hearing.
Thank you.
And we can vote to move forward on this next week. Thank you. All right. Number six, discuss the seven-seven-two and cooperative district agreement. Mr. Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Thank you, mayor, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you tonight. It may be the first time many of you have seen me, but my company, Noon Real Estate, I'm the president of Noon Real Estate, Chattanooga, Tennessee-based real estate development company. And we have been in your community for the better part of two years trying to put together various retail projects. And I just want to commend you guys for the recent rezoning, some residential land to enhance density on that property. That has really been a big part of kind of getting us over the top, right? Resolidifying our belief in the pro-growth nature of Scottsboro and the opportunity to bring, what we're really here to talk about, a large arts and crafts store to your community. So with that, I'd like to just tell you briefly about the project. Again, it's a large arts and crafts. I'll go ahead and tell you the name. It's Hobby Lobby. We'd love the opportunity to bring it here. And we'd like to take advantage of the great state of Alabama's seven-seventy-two amendment and the tools you've used on other retail projects to try and make this project a reality. Those tools are available to help bridge financial gaps, and you're blessed that your state affords you that opportunity. It's a tool we frequently use in our business in today's cost world. It's extremely challenging to build from the ground up, particularly in smaller communities, secondary, tertiary communities like Scottsboro. So we'd like to use the tools that you've used in past developments, and then we'd like to introduce the concept of cooperative district, which allows us to layer on some additional components to bridge the last remaining piece of the gap. And so with that, I keep it short and sweet. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Well, Mr. Jennings, we really appreciate you being here and appreciate those kind words. I know it's been going on for a while to make this work out, and I appreciate you not giving up on us and getting over the hump here and getting to this position we're in. Does anyone have any questions before Mr. Kenner goes over this?
I have a question.
Okay.
Could you tell us about how many employees would be coming and what the preliminary salary figures would be for those people?
Sure, I'm happy to. We are landlords, so we're not the employer. But I will tell you that Hobby Lobby is a Christian-based company. They believe in a living wage. Typical average starting wage is eighteen dollars per hour for full-time employees. The Alabama state average is one-point-seven jobs created per thousand square feet. This is roughly a fifty-thousand-square-foot building, so roughly a hundred jobs. Again, there'll be full-time jobs, part-time jobs, good training with a national company, again, strong Christian faith behind that company. And then, of course, the construction jobs, we're Chattanooga, Tennessee-based. We do a lot of activity in the state of Alabama, and we hire a general contractor. We don't self-perform work, but we hire a general contractor, and they also don't self-perform, which means that they're going out to local tradesmen to fill out the work, to complete the job, and that's the same process we envision here.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Jennings? No questions. And Mr. Kenner, will you go over the seven-seven-two and cooperative district?
As has been said, the legislature has established several incentive programs for economic development. Many of them have been in place since the Wallace-Cater Act back in the fifties, started it for industrial recruitment. Every industry that's moved to Scottsboro in my lifetime has gone under that and received some kind of benefit. The legislature about twenty years ago started saying, well, commercial development is something we can do the same thing. Bessemer sort of led the way. If you've been between Bessemer and Tuscaloosa, you've seen it. Those were all built using seven-seventy-two money or district monies. But basically, these are methodologies for incentives that are given to companies that do development, hire local people, and produce sales tax. You give away some sales tax for a while, but right now you've got all of nothing. Under the agreement, you would have part of something. This particular project is not duplicative, which means it's supplemental. We don't have a large arts and craft Hobby Lobby kind of place here. The city has been involved in at least four previous seven-seventy-twos. This would be our first cooperative district. Basically, it's everyone agrees that the store will be able to charge a little bit more to pay for things. It may be things like the parking lot, utility connections, things of that nature. But they can allocate a certain period, a certain amount of money or percentage over a period of time to that under the cooperative district agreement. Seven-seventy-two would be a certain amount. We would have to negotiate the fine points, what percentage is, and the number of years it would be in place. We would, of course, want to have a situation where we establish the maximum amount. And hopefully, looking at the projections that I've seen of Hobby Lobby, we're going to see it paid off pretty quickly, and I think much quicker than the paperwork would permit. I think they'll do very well here. But these are standard incentives that cities like Scottsboro, most of the cities around Jefferson County, the cities of Huntsville and northeast Alabama, are providing for economic development and commercial development.
Anyone have any questions on either one of these programs?
Can I ask a quick question? Where would you be looking?
That's not, that's not something we're involved in.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I think that's not settled yet, so I wouldn't want to raise the price on the land on it. So we'll hold off on that part right now. This is just the negotiation with the city part. Anyone else have any questions then?
Is there any assurances that contractors would use local businesses for their materials in the building? local businesses for their materials in the building?
Yeah, I would say there's no hard and fast assurance. Of course, what we try and do is source the materials and source the labor locally. Obviously, we're here asking for help because the project needs it, right? And so if there is a local option that is the most cost-effective option, that's absolutely who we're going to go with.
So that would go for the contractor, too?
Yes, sir, absolutely. It's, the contractor's also a Chattanooga, Tennessee-based contractor, just FYI. You know, I've been doing this for 15 years. I've developed 20-plus shopping centers in my career. It's a contractor we use often. Again, they don't self-perform anything. Materials and labor are almost always sourced locally, to the extent they're available. Some communities don't have a skilled electrician or skilled plumbing that can do the capacity of the job. But this is a single-tenant development, and we would do everything in our power to make sure that we can find local, if qualified, contractors, subcontractors.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Well, no other questions, just a comment. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me.
I really know how long this has taken, and there's a lot of work putting in. And Mayor, I would say, appreciate the work you put in on this, too. And thank you, thank you.
Thank you, all.
All right. This will conclude the public hearing then, and then we'll move this to next week as all, well, yeah, to move forward with it next week.
Yes.
So, so we'll put that on for next week. All right. Number seven, approve the 90% of the 2024-2025 budget. Ms. Roden. She loves to speak.
So you all have the summary sheet that has the revenue and all the expenses. And so tonight, we're doing 90% of the total budget, which the total budget is $29,143,240. So the 90% would be $26,228,916.
Okay. You see in your packet those numbers. Anyone have any questions? Ms. Roden, thank you for this, doing this budget. And I know there were a lot of late nights from the council getting this knocked out, and I appreciate all the work you did on this. We'll put that on next week's meeting for a vote. Number eight, discuss the resolution to approve an electronic signature policy. Ms. Phillips, you go over that, please.
Over the last fiscal year, our police officers have worked nearly $60,000 in traffic overtime funds through ADECA's Highway Traffic Safety Program. If we wish to continue to receive these funds through this program, we have to, the city has to adopt an electronic signature policy by October 1. So Mr. Kenner's office has drafted a policy for you guys.
Okay. And I know I've been reached out to. This is not changing the way we do everything else in the city. This is just for this program here. So anyone have any questions on this electronic signature policy? All right, no questions. We'll move back to next week's meeting. Number nine, discuss the resolution to award a fuel bid. And Ms. Phillips, when you get done, I'm sorry.
Sorry. We recently solicited bids for our fuel for our annual for the year. We received three bids. Valley Oil Company is the overall lowest bidder. So that is our recommendation.
Okay. You see the fuel bid in here for this year? Anyone have any questions? No questions, we'll move back to next week's meeting. Number 10, discuss the resolution to approve the one-time holiday for employees. I'll go over this. As you know, I believe the last four years, the council has approved Columbus Day as a one-time holiday for employees, and I'm going to bring it again in front of you for this year. We usually check to see how the year is going before we look at Columbus Day, and we've been blessed again with another great year from the city. And as you saw tonight, we have great employees, and this is a chance to give back just a little bit to them. So under, my recommendation is to approve this, but like I say, if anyone has any questions on it, I'll entertain those now.
I'm all for giving holidays.
All right, then we'll move back to next week's meeting for a vote. Thank you. And number 11, discuss the truck scales at the landfill. Mr. Leble, saved you for last.
This is a two-part session here. First page that you got is a repair that had been made last week. It ended up being, we had some bad load cells. We had some varmint issues on some wiring, which is rats and, or any catching down on camera, so I don't know what it is, something to do. But these repairs that were done, this is by a new company. We had a company that we'd been using, but we just wasn't satisfied with what was happening. So this is a new company that came in, or they were recommended by several industries around here that does theirs. You know, several of them should have their own scales, but this needs to be amended, if you so choose, to get this took care of. We didn't have, what we ended up doing is we were sending people back to the, from the landfill to solid waste to get away. It was such an inconvenience. We were hurting some folks, and so we had to try to get this thing fixed as quick as possible. So this was our best route to do so.
Okay.
That's that one. All right, the second one is replacement, scale replacement. We discussed this in the budget, and we set aside, I know you, the finance director, has set aside a portion of money to do this project. The prices came back, as you can see, the Birmingham Toledo, which is the new scale, is one we don't recommend. We don't need to rebuild the old one. We're not going to get out of it what we would have gotten out of the new one by far. So I'm going to recommend we just concentrate on the new build. It's a replacement. It's got a 10-year warranty. It's not inclusive. There's some things in there that we need to redefine, which I have. Five years, you pretty well cover everything. After that, it starts to ruin and bounce like everything else. Parts and labor for five years on a unit could turn into many, many dollars for the city from what we paid over the last almost six years that I've been here. I don't know what we paid prior to that, but it's just racking up, and it's just too much. So it's time to try to move on. Our problem is, if you'll flip that one over, it's $118,731.50. Now, we've appropriated 100, but again, the 100 would get us the rebuild, which we first started talking about. This is a new replacement, and it's well worth looking at, adjusting that figure to take care of us having a new one rather than rebuild the refurbished one that we have.
Mr. Kenner, will we have to bid this out? Is this a sole source?
It's a sole source, but I've got two prices. And there's only two people. One of them's in Chattanooga, and one of them's in Birmingham, that I could even get to come up here. Scale systems are normally whoever the skills to buy, which we have a Fairbanks, so normally Fairbanks takes care of that. So you can't just solicit anyone to come back and try to get it, and try to break it straight.
I'm talking about buying the new, though.
Right. This is, the Fairbanks, of course, is in this package, but they would not offer a new one. They offered refurbishing the one that was there because it is a Fairbanks. So they didn't even give me a price on the new one. Birmingham Toledo is the only one that priced new.
Mr. Kenner, got me.
If you want a new one, the safest thing is put it out for bid.
Okay.
One person bids, negotiate.
Okay. All right, so tonight, we're going to be asking for the repair, and that's $9,960.75, correct?
That's correct.
And then asking to bid out a new scale.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anyone have any questions as far as moving forward with getting this scale up and operating again? No questions? All right, we'll put that on next week's meeting. Thank you. All right, that will conclude the meeting tonight. There's no delegation, so we'll go to reports. Mayor?
Just a couple of things. First, Mr. Akas, Mr. Bellamy, Mr. Winn, we appreciate y'all being here tonight for the CDBG project. We appreciate it very much and look forward to getting that completed. Congratulations to our police and fire tonight for their heroic efforts, and to our employees for their long years of service. That's all I've got, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Ms. Tolliver?
I don't have anything, thank you for coming.
Ms. Frederick?
Well, I do, I appreciate all the employees, but once again, I want to brag on our enforcement officer, Ryan Putman. There's several places that people have been complaining for a couple of years about getting cleaned up. And when I rode around with Ryan one day, I found out today that those places are already cleaned up. So I appreciate him very much. He's doing a really good job. And let's tell him to keep up the good work. I don't know where he went, but I'm bragging on him again.
He's out working right now, so.
Right, right. But he's really doing a good job on cleaning up the city, so. Anyway, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. I'll remind everybody there'll be a meeting next Monday, the 23rd, but there'll be no meeting on September 30th. That's the 5th, 5th Monday. And, but next week, I'll go over the October schedule, depending on if the one-time holiday passes, whether or not how we have to double up. So we'll go over that next week. So I appreciate everyone coming out. We're adjourned.